And I now am pleased to recognize and turn over Natalie Yozza as our moderator for this evening's event. Natalie is a practicing attorney with a law degree from KU, as well as being a graduate of KU's Certified Public Manager Program. She has served on the Lawrence Public Transportation Advisory Committee, and currently serves as a Democratic Recent Committee person here in Douglas County. She is married and the mother of three very active young boys. So with this, I am pleased to turn it over to Natalie, who will be hosting the candidates tonight. Thank you, Natalie.
Thanks, Pat. Welcome. I'm excited to be moderating tonight's forum. We are going to have about nine questions, and we're going to vary the response time for each candidate, 60 seconds, 90 seconds, and then at the very end, we're going to do some quick 30-second questions. Our goal is to be wrapping up at or around an hour. We will not be taking questions from the audience or from the chat feature tonight. And if everyone else is ready, let's get started. Question one is going to be 60 seconds response time for each candidate. And we just ask that you introduce yourself by stating your name, sharing relevant work experience, highlighting any public service positions you have previously held, and explaining why you decided to run for the Lawrence City Commission. And first up will be Lisa Larson.
There you go. Sorry about that. Hi, my name is Lisa Larson, and I've been a city commissioner for the past six years. I served as the Vice Mayor in 2018 and the Mayor in 2019. I'm a licensed professional geologist and a Kansas Supreme Court certified mediator. At the beginning of my professional career, I worked at the Kansas Department of Health and Environment as an environmental geologist. In 1992, after leaving the state, I started my business as an environmental consultant and sold it in 2014. I'm running for reelection to further basically the work that I've started, from hiring a new city manager to doing a complete review of our priorities, our operations, as well as our facilities. I voted into to enact policies that has brought economic development to Lawrence, and we've begun the hard work of building an infrastructure for addressing affordable housing. And more recently, we're working on housing initiatives for the homeless who are in our community. We've really made great strides, and changes are occurring, but more work needs to be done. I want to use my experience as a commissioner and skills as a mediator, a former small business owner, and a licensed professional geologist to better Lawrence. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Ma Ko Kwa Jones.
Bonjour. My name is Ma Ko Kwa Jones. I'm a citizen of the Prairie Band Potawatomi Nation. I graduated Dartmouth College with a government degree in Native American Studies. I graduated from Haskell with an associate's degree, and I have a master's degree in environmental law and policy from Vermont Law School. I am currently the Chair of the Sustainability Advisory Board. I founded and chair the Native American Caucus, the Kansas Democratic Native American Caucus, and I'm on the board for Kansas Association for Conservation and Environmental Education. I want to build a more sustainable Lawrence. That's why I decided to run. I want to see Lawrence be a leader in Kansas for conservation, for environmental education, for sustainability. I think that there's a lot of ways that we can incorporate sustainability into our downtown plan, our strategic plan. That's what the Sustainability Advisory Board is trying to do, and I think that we do have the opportunity to make a more environmentally conscious Lawrence. Thank you.
Next up will be Bart Littlejohn.
Hello, everyone. I'm Bart Littlejohn. Been here for 25 years, went to KU, and just liked it so much, decided to stick around. Currently, the Chair of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board and also a part of the Douglas, I'm sorry, the Steering Committee for the Douglas County Health Improvement Plan. And basically, why I'm running is I'm running for the hard folks in Lawrence who feel like they're not being heard. It's my goal to work as hard as possible to bring as many people together as possible so that we can find solutions regarding equity, housing, and economic development. And when I talk about equity, I'm talking about access to maintaining your health, quality, healthy foods, and a safe, sustainable place to live. And when I'm talking about housing, I'm talking about accessibility, availability, and affordability. When I'm talking about economic development, I'm talking about working for the people in Lawrence who work hard here every day in small businesses. I believe Lawrence only works when it works for everyone.
And Stuart Bowley, you're up next.
Sorry, I'm having a little difficulty here. Hi, everybody. I'm Stuart Bowley. Thank you to Democrats for hosting us this evening. In 2009, I retired from a 32-year career as an auditor at the IRS. And after that, I worked for six years at Douglas County Community Foundation as the administrative officer. I was first elected to the City Commission in 2015, served as Mayor in 2018, and was reelected in 2019. So I have six years of experience on the commission. Before that, I served five years on the Traffic Safety Commission. Our community's strategic plan has identified five outcomes that represent what our cities and business to do. It also has six commitments about how we will do this work. I support the strategic plan. It's key to sustaining our progress and enhancing coordination with our partners. I'm running again to serve the community, offering experience and continuity to the challenges we face.
Next up is Amber Sellers.
Good evening. My name is Amber Sellers, and it would be an honor to serve as your next city commissioner. My progressive work experience in public health and public policy have served me well, strengthening my skills in strategic planning, communication, data analysis, and partnership engagement. My current position in administration and policy with the state affords me the opportunity to practice regulatory administration, as well as provide input on how to strengthen the delivery of program services and outcomes for families in our state. I currently serve as Chair of our city's Human Relations Commission, whose role is to elevate community awareness in the areas of civil rights and employment, housing, and public accommodation. I've made it my life's calling to be a service to my community, ensuring that the people most impacted by policies such as affordable housing, economic development, and smart infrastructure are centered and engaged in shaping them. Prosperity depends on inclusion, access, and connection. And I believe my voice, as well as my skill set, can be that catalyst for change.
Milton Scott, you're our last candidate on this question.
Hi, I'm Milton Scott, and I've had 20-plus years of industry affordable housing programs in the community here in Lawrence and also in Kansas City, Kansas. Have the industry knowledge and know the history of Lawrence that would benefit the community, which will allow me to move the needle a little faster. I've seen firsthand and understand how high utility rates compound affordability in Lawrence, especially for low and moderate income individuals. I want the city to partner with our housing providers to encourage mixed developments throughout Lawrence, outlined in the 2040 plan, that provides permanent affordable housing stock in the community, including townhomes and duplexes. Also note that we need to address workers and make sure that they receive a living wage and prevailing wage for those, especially independent contractors. So those are the things that encouraged me to run. I've also been involved in the newest activities and organization in the community, the League of Women Voters, site councils at Sunset Hill, and also at Free State High School. And I also participate in my church activities. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. Question number two is going to be another question with 60 seconds to respond. A friend of mine once described her experience campaigning for school board as the longest, most intense job interview she's ever been on. Please describe what you believe the job of city commissioner is. What is a city commissioner's role, and what is the city manager's role? Let's see. And first up will be Ma Ko Kwa Jones.
So I think that first and foremost, the city commissioner represents the people of the community. That's something that I take very seriously, not just representing people like me, but representing the whole community. I think that it's a responsibility to put forth policy and vote on policy that's the best for the most people, recognizing marginalized experiences. I think that the city manager, you know, as the city commission vote on policies and initiatives, I think that the city manager puts those into action. I think that's what the role of the city manager should do and probably does. City commissioners, you know, carry the weight of having, you know, being a voice for all the people and trying to put forth policies that is going to make a better Lawrence. It's going to make a more inclusive Lawrence. That's what I want to see as a city commissioner, and that's what I hope to be. Thank you.
And next, we'll hear from Bart Littlejohn.
Thanks. Ideally, what I see as city role as city commissioner is being not a role of service, strategic thinking and communication service, because you're elected to be a representative for the city, and you're elected to work as hard as you can for them, include them as much as possible, and work to make sure that everybody is represented to the best of your ability. Strategic thinking, we've got a lot of problems ahead of us, and we need to come up with short-term and long-term solutions and meld them together to find things that work for our city and the people in our city. And communication, I know that sometimes we fall down on that, but we need to almost overextend our communication. Work hard to reach those underrepresented, underserved folks. Make sure that they're a part of the process when they're usually not a part of the process, because they have valuable intentions and have valuable skills to bring to the table as well. And the city manager's role is execution. He takes those higher-level plans and puts them into practical, applicable use for the city staff and the rest of the city.
Okay, Stuart Bowley.
Thank you. Three words come immediately to mind: listen, learn, and work. City commissioners need to work hard to understand, you know, what people are experiencing in our community and set policies that will, you know, bring progress and success to the community. Another thing we do is we are responsible for making budget decisions, prioritizing programs. So, you know, I think the three words listen, learn, and work are frankly much more than speaking. I think communication is important, and there are many times I wish I spoke better. But, you know, I've appreciated the opportunity to do this work, and, you know, the role of city manager is to, you know, administer the government and, you know, the city commission's policy and budget decisions. Thanks.
Okay, Amber Sellers.
Thank you. It was lovely to explain to me that the city manager and our structure serves as kind of the CEO of the company. So they're in charge of the day-to-day operations, and that the city commission serves as the Board of Directors. And so it's not just about the oversight and the fiduciary responsibility of looking over budgets and policies, but a good board member engages the consumer as well as the employee, in this case, the community, as well as the city staff. So it's our goal as city commissioners to educate, elevate, and engage. We are the first line of community engagement for our community. If we're not reaching out to our community and they can't reciprocate that to us, then we've already broken the line of communication. But we also need to educate ourselves, educate our city manager, and educate our city staff so that we elevate the skills that they have, and we also elevate those within our community.
Milton Scott, it's your turn.
My view of the role of the commissioner is to provide vision to set policy, to be transparent, open, and forthright, and thoughtful to direct resources to address the needs of the community. In addition, the commissioner should be an advocate for the community as well, and always in that role to look at issues and be able to speak to others at our state and federal level. So those are the things that I think that is so important for us, has been setting policy. Once we set those policies and we set budget, then we are hired by the city citizens to do those things. And I think it's the role of the city manager to carry them out for us. Thank you.
And Lisa Larson.
Hi, thank you very much. So the city commission is the policy arm of our government. And our job, I believe, is to enact the policies that reflect the values of our community. The city manager hires, I mean, the city commission hires the city manager, and he or she is in charge of all city operations, as well as ensures that the policies that the commission sets are enacted in full. And how I do this as a commissioner is first I read everything I can get my hands on about an issue that we're trying to deal with. And then I also listen, and I don't mean just listening for the sake of listening, but it's what I call active listening. And that is to listen to those who have ideas or concerns about our community and make sure I hear what they are saying and not what I want them to say, what I think they should be saying. So I'm really, and I think it's just important that we read a lot and that we listen to our community so we can enact those policies that reflect those values in Lawrence.
Thank you, candidates. We'll move on to question three, and let's get into some hot topics of the day. This question is going to be a 90-second response time, so you'll have a little bit longer. Question three is, there's been a lot of discussion about the need for police reform. The recently released City Gate report said the police department is not connected to the city through the city's goals and objectives. It highlights that there are no reported measures as part of the city's budget documents as adopted by the city commission. There are no measures tied to the city commission's strategies. What would you add to the budget or the city's strategic plan in order to better establish what the commission views as the community's policing priorities? And first up for question three, we will have Bart Littlejohn.
Thanks. So coming out of that, City Gate said that one of the recommendations was that we have performance measures and accountabilities that are fully integrated and that meld with our city plan. They also said that the will is there for the police department to do the job, but they're falling down in the execution of it. And more specifically, that they believe that a community-oriented policing measure would be more effective for our community, which I wholeheartedly agree. And what that entails is, you know, reaching out to the community, making sure that you're going ahead and making yourself a presence so that people will know that you aren't always there at their worst time, that you can always be there at their best time as well. And also establishing a relationship, a better relationship with the community police review board and also underrepresented population, making sure that you are making an extra effort to be a part of your community. I think that we can go ahead and bridge that gap of trust between those organizations and those entities, because I believe our police department wants to make that effort and wants to be that kind of department that has oversight, that is transparent, that is more accountable, and that emphasizes communication in the present instead of communication when it has to be.
Stuart Bowley, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I would highlight two key performance indicators in the safe and secure outcome. The first one I'll talk about is the percent of residents who perceive Lawrence as safe or very safe. That's an outcome that we'll be measuring. Under equity inclusion, the second one is the variance of satisfaction with perceptions of safety by race, gender, education, and income. So I believe that we're working through our strategic plan to a goal of safe and secure where we have trusted public safety resources. So I think, you know, the work needs to be done in the police department to align with the strategic plan that we have adopted. The strategic plan is the, you know, what determines what the city is in business to do. And providing trusted public safety resources is key to our success as a community. And we need to bridge the gap in trust between our minority communities and the police department. And again, there are 60 findings and 75 recommendations in the City Gate report. I think that if we look at that and augment it as we need to, to align with the city's strategic plan, we'll be working towards a much more successful outcome in safe and secure. Thank you.
Amber Sellers.
Thank you. Just to piggyback a little bit on what Stuart brought up in regards to the progress indicators under safe and secure, there were a couple that he didn't really touch on. But there's one where, under equity and inclusion, there's the sexual and domestic violence per 1,000 residents. And I know that we've been dealing with issues of that, not only on our campus, but also in our community. And I noticed that in those measures, I think the last city commission meeting, our interim chief did highlight that there is an FTE that they plan to use to bring on a full-time individual to work in regards with the FTE unit around that. So we see that there's opportunities there to be more inclusive in bringing in our police department and having them within our strategic plan from a budget standpoint. This one's going to take, this one's going to take a lot of work. One, I don't think we're all on one accord as far as the, how deep we've gone with the recommendations from City Gate and that we've kind of take them on face value and that we've used them as a ceiling and not as the foundation for what we need to do. So I'm not sure this first round, we can get them into the strategic plan, but that definitely doesn't mean that there's not an opportunity there with some of the work that they're doing around policy and practice.
Okay, Milton Scott.
You know, recently, a report from the law enforcement contact study showed that people of color are almost twice as likely to be searched and stopped by law enforcement in Douglas County. And another study also revealed that racial disparity in bail bonds may further evidence of systematic racism. The data further revealed how systematic racism impacts criminal justice. So I think the police department needs to engage in better transparency, which I think would ultimately build community trust. I support the review of policing methods and developing policies that increase community engagement, including establishing community partner-based police solution, alternative response systems. And I also think that we need to improve race relations and communications, remove the disconnect with the racial and ethnic groups. Also, support the strengthening of the police review board and to give them more authority. And those are some of the things, along with the Judge Floyd Policing Act of 2021, we can look at those measures and to include it. So those are the things that I will be looking at and encourage. And again, with Amber, I don't think we've scratched the surface of what's going on. And I know there are individuals in the community who feel that they can't call the police or don't want to call the police because of their ethnic background. So we need to really work in this particular area to remove those stereotypes. Thank you.
Okay, Lisa Larson.
Sorry about that. So two of the things that were, a couple of the items that were brought out, as you say, in the City Gate report was the, and the ones that kind of struck me was a lack of trust with the minority community that our police department has. Obviously, that's extremely concerning, but then also the lack of data collection that just isn't there to actually do any key performance indicators. So that's something that we've definitely got to make sure that that's addressed. And then that would go to our strategic plan of being able to determine if they are meeting our outcomes and our commitments in our strategic plan. So those are two items. I also believe that we need to work with officers to allow them to do what they're trained for in those areas where they're not trained from, such as mental health necessarily. Those need to be done by other professionals, and we've started to do that with this last budget. We actually took some of the positions that were sworn officers and actually turned them into positions, such as Amber had mentioned, the victim's offender position, as well as others that don't require a sworn officer. So I think the budget issue that you had talked about or that you had mentioned, I think that that's one way that we can address some of those concerns is if we pull those tasks away from officers that they really aren't trained to do and let them do what they're trained to do and have those positions filled by professionals can actually make headway and do better service for our community.
And last, we'll have Ma Ko Kwa Jones.
In the City Gate report, one of the things that struck me was the recommendation to have training by outside personnel, implicit bias training, and mental health training. I think that this, you know, I'm always trying to recognize the safety of the officers, but at the same time, if we're trying to build relations, you know, I think everybody on this panel recognizes that community engagement is really something that the police department needs to work on. You know, having a communications person, I think it helps if we better understand a police situation and understand our situation. You know, it details different experiences with African Americans, Native Americans. And so, you know, that implicit bias training, I think, would be really helpful in cultural competency. The City Gate mentions cultural competency, understanding, you know, different cultures, different norms for different people. I think that's key. I think that we need to budget that in. It needs to be part of recruitment training. It needs to be, I think City Gate talked about performance measures in that, and I totally support that. So I think that all the recommendations for community engagement is what we need to focus on with criminal justice reform.
All right, we will move to question four. It will be another question with 90 seconds to respond per candidate. That question is, what are your ideas for how to make Lawrence more climate resilient? And first up will be Stuart Bowley.
I think that, you know, we've got a capital improvement plan that is going to deal with some of our stormwater issues. We have people who are getting flooded because our stormwater system hasn't kept up. You know, we have water treatment plants that frankly don't quite meet regulatory standards. And so we have agreement with KDHE to bring them into compliance, which is one of the things that we're spending money on in our capital improvement plan. And the environmental remediation at Farmland Industry Site is a huge issue for the city in environmental sustainability. I think increasing the density of our footprint will help. That will, you know, use less of our, you know, surrounding land, and also it will enhance utilization of public transportation. Moving to, you know, sustainable electricity is something that we've been working on. I think there are lots of things that we can do, but I think, you know, dealing with the farmland site is a huge environmental issue for us.
Next up is Amber Sellers.
I would think two areas we should focus on in regards to our climate area here is, one, as it relates to retrofitting of buildings and housing, as well as, oh, our third one would be around our utilities. There is a lot of new data and laws that have been introduced in several states around smart infrastructure and retrofitting of buildings in order to bring them up to code or to be utilized for other mixed use, as well as for housing pieces. And although we can argue both sides of the good, bad, or indifferent, it is something that we need to At least explore a little bit more in depth. As we look at lessening our footprint and as we get into discussions about expanding our city's. Line as it relates to housing. We know that climate has affected our housing here and it's been an impact on our. On our utilities as well. And I know that we've seen a constant increase in our utility rates and it's been reflective of. The lack of preparation on the be, on the front end. And so now our, our, our community is paying for it on the back end. So we do need to look at how do we address our utility rates, but also look at retrofitting buildings to be utilized for economic purposes as well as for housing purposes.
Milton Scott.
Oh, and Stuart brought up about farmland industry and that site. And that's one of the areas that I think that the city have, should have learned or learned from that experience that we need to be. Very insightful in managing those type of situations because it's costly for the community. Even though we put together, the, the city put together the downtown plan, I don't think it went enough to look at how to retrofit some of the building. To what Amber was speaking to earlier to look at energy efficiency. Matter of fact, it really didn't talk much about looking at sustainable. Environment, energy for that particular location. And I think that was one of the things that Stuart said that while he voted against that. So those are the things that we need to be mindful of and then bring in, in individuals and experts and utilizing our resources in the community. So that way, we can be smart about what we're doing and looking at energy costs because there's still continuously flooding in the community. And I think at some point too, we need to tap into state and federal resources to help us with some of these. Things that we need to do and address because we won't be able to do them all within our budget. So we need that outside resources. And this has given us an opportunity to look at sustainable energy throughout the community and be an example for others. And as we get new development or encouraging development, those are should be some of the things that's on the table to be discussed.
Lisa Larson.
Hi, thank you very much. So yeah, in two thousand nineteen, we passed the, we passed Plan Twenty Forty, which is our, our growth as well as. Well, our growth plan for Lawrence up to two thousand twenty-four. And the driver of that entire document, which is basically the roadmap for how we're going to grow in Lawrence, that driver is sustainability. It's woven throughout that entire document with the idea that we need to be more dense with our buildings to make them more sustainable, to increase the use of our infrastructure. Basically using of the lowest cost of ownership. That's really important to look at. And Tuesday night, last Tuesday night, we actually passed a text amendment that. Will not allow development to incur in what we call our tier-two and tier-three areas of Lawrence until Lawrence has actually annexed them. So that will require that, require a certain amount of density to occur before they even. As their annex into Lawrence. And that's, that was really an important vote, I think. We also passed previously double densities rule, so you can have some area, some lots that have double the density on it. And we also passed the, in twenty twenty. Twenty, we passed the ordinance for clean energy to be one hundred percent clean energy in Lawrence by twenty thirty, thirty-five. So those are like things we're doing locally to, to work on some of these climate issues, make us more sustainable with our climate issues.
And Makua Jones.
I think a couple of candidates mentioned that utility rates, I think, is one of the most important issues facing people in Lawrence. I think that mixed energy, mixed renewable energy sources is going, is going to make us more climate resilient. During the winter time, we had rolling blackouts. And that goes to the infrastructure of, of our energy grid. And we need more sources of energy to pull from. And I think that as, as we talk about development, economic development, requiring buildings to be solar-ready. Requiring buildings to be energy efficient. Requiring them to adhere to some of the smart technology. I think that's important. I think the energy conservation on, you know, by the city, all of the buildings, the planning. I think that all needs to look at energy efficiency, looks, needs to look at being. Being ready for mixed renewable energy sources, like I said, solar-ready. I think that Stuart mentioned stormwater infrastructure. We have experienced a lot of flooding in the streets. Stormwater infrastructure is really important. We've had a lot of people in Lawrence complain about their basements flooding. Substandard housing for low-income folks and driving safety hazards. So I think that the two most important things are utility rates and stormwater infrastructure. I think that makes us more climate resilient.
And last on question four will be Bart Littlejohn.
Yeah, it's a, I believe everybody brought up, you know, kind of similar points and, you know, points that I will go over, infrastructure. By making our buildings more climate resilient, making them more efficient, making them, you know, smart code. Also, infrastructure in terms of stormwater, as Stuart and Makua said, you know, making sure that. We are trying to avoid those flood zones, that we're directing our water in proper ways, we're making sure that people are out of respective danger. And, and also in terms of infrastructure, making sure that our roads and bridges are in top shape because that can contribute to it as well if they're in poor or declining shape. And also, climate, you know, change also has to do with housing. Making sure that folks, you know, their housing is efficient, making sure that they have everything they need. And that rolls into, of course, utilities, as Amber said, and, you know, which also, which rolls into the grid. Making sure that we have those alternative energies, like Makua said, so that we can be more resilient, more diverse and more flexible. Because as we've, as we've been, as we've seen recently during the winter time here and in Texas and all around the country, those things are going to happen more and more. And as well, it's making sure that we're introducing practices. That are looking long-term or sustainable and will be effective for generations to come. Because we're not only thinking of ourselves, we're thinking of our children.
Question number five is going to be the last question with ninety seconds for a response. Homelessness and the need for affordable housing is at a historic high in Lawrence. In fiscal year twenty twenty-one, the city appropriated around one point one million from the general fund. Or about one percent of general fund dollars for homeless outreach, rapid rehousing and emergency sheltering. Do you believe that funding level is adequate to address these issues? And if not, what level of city funding would you work to establish? First up, we will hear from Amber Sellers.
Thank you. So the question of homelessness and affordable housing are, can be grouped up under one umbrella, but they are one of not the same. The spectrum of homelessness speaks to a lot of different pieces. And affordable housing does intersect with homelessness. But I want us to be very careful in using those two together because it's not a catch-all. If we want to specifically talk to homelessness from an area of transientcy or chronic homelessness. And the one point one that we use for that, that's one piece. If we're talking about it from our housing trust fund piece and. How do we build people, how do we get people into affordable housing? That's another piece. So is there an opportunity there for our city to provide more funds? I would say, yes, there's an opportunity. However, we know that currently where our budget stands and where our fiscal controls are as a city. That puts us at a disadvantage. If we're talking about chronic homelessness or transient population and how to do temporary rap, rapid housing. We could continue to lean on our partners, such as Burt Nash and some of the work that they've been doing. And utilize ARPA dollars to put some work behind that. As far as a long-term goal. We would need to look at some of our financial controls before we look into that. But we can continue to partner. Still utilize and lean on our community partners and lean to opportunities such as city-owned property to build that, that relationship.
Next up is Milton Scott. Milton, I'm afraid you're on mute still.
No, I was saying, it's not enough money for us to really address homelessness in our community. And I think we do need to look at ways that we can increase those funds. And also understand too, some, in some cases, we redirect some of those funds that are specifically to address homelessness in the community. I think we should, should use all that fund for those purposes. We need to look like Amber said before, you know, we need a strategic plan and looking at how we can do this. How we can move people from homelessness to transitional, to permanent, to homeownership. And I think if we do those things, then we have an opportunity for individuals to come in and out of that process and system so that way we can assist them. You know, we, we generally can receive funds from HUD in those particular areas. And there's oftentimes that monies are available because other cities are not utilizing it. And we need to be tapping into those resources. We also have our, our community partners, housing partners that can tap into other resources. And we can leverage all those resources together to develop some type of permanent housing, permanent housing that we can keep in the community that would never go away. And I think Housing Authority has done that in the past and the Housing Trust Fund, that's, trust have done that as well. So we need to be looking at those resources that we have. And we need to make sure that we're spending those dollars that we see specifically for that. And I think in some cases, I've heard that we want to develop a different department to do that. And that's taking away funds from the root of the problem. And I know that in the past, individuals that received funds and received services often.
Thank you, Milton. I think your time is up and we will move on to Lisa Larson.
Hi, thank you. So, um, you know, I think. As far as affordable housing and homelessness, the amount of money that we allocated in twenty twenty-one. I do know that in twenty twenty-two, we did allocate more to our housing initiative programs. But is that enough? Obviously, we haven't solved the problem, so we can always. We're always in need of trying to provide more funding, but we also need to make sure that money is targeted to the right places and that we spend it efficiently. And one way we do that, I think, is that we work with partners throughout the community. To basically to leverage our dollars. And during the last funding round for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We were leveraging that, those dollars from one to six to one to ten on the projects that we approved. And what that means is that for every dollar that the city puts into it. That nonprofit can pull in six dollars and turn it into six dollars just by using that funding mechanism to go out and get grants. When they see that the city's invested in that money or in those projects and the nonprofits can access, potentially access more money through grants. So it's important to remember that the city's putting in that much, but those nonprofits can leverage that quite a bit more money. And that's really key. And we need to make sure that we continue on that road and work with our partners so that we are, you know, we can be sure. And just make sure we get all the monies from the state and feds, as well as other grant programs to increase some of those, the power of those dollars.
Makua Jones.
So when you say affordable housing, the key word there is affordable. We, we need to be working with the landlords, with the property owners and trying to understand why their, you know, why their rates are increasing. Why housing, renting and housing is becoming more and more expensive in Lawrence and inaccessible to, to people living in Lawrence. You know, dealing with homelessness, there's different levels of homelessness. There's chronic homelessness and then there's. Renters who have, you know, aren't able to have secure housing, to have stable housing. And I think that having a tenant's bill of rights to protect renters from predatory landlords, from substandard housing. I think, and keeping them in their homes, I think that that's one of the keys. I think that for chronic homelessness, you know, we need to put funding towards community advocates. I think that, you know, as somebody who's accessed, who has accessed our community resources, there's a lot of barriers still. You know, we need trauma-informed people talking to, to people who's calling so that we're not having an attitude that kind of pushes them away. I think that what, having community advocates who can walk people through each step of, of the process. I think it can be very intimidating to chronic homeless people or people who have never accessed those resources before. It can, it can be daunting and overwhelming. And so I think that that's, those are two ways that we can funnel funding to that.
And Bart Littlejohn.
Uh, yeah, the way I look at it is short-term and long-term. Short-term, as, as has been said before, we can go ahead and direct some of those ARPA dollars towards. Houselessness and, and affordable housing to go ahead, you know, try to, to address that in the long-term. Like some of my colleagues here have said, you know, engaging with our for-profit developers and other partners in, in the community. So that, you know, we can try to get some projects with for-profit and nonprofit developers, try to meld those two resources. Go ahead and assist the city. Make, make sure that we have a stable base of affordable housing so that. People can start up with their starter homes or just their beginning homes. Making sure that, also that we, you know, devote enough money towards facilities like Burt Nash. So that they can go ahead and address and help folks raise themselves up out of houselessness. Because as we, as we've seen before, all those folks unfortunately need that mental, mental health assistance sometimes. And most of all, it, it as well, just supporting those social service entities like Burt Nash. Because for the most part, they're overworked, underfunded. And, and I, I would hate to burn those folks out for all the, all the work we currently ask them to do. And hopefully, you know, all that and above, we can go ahead and try to apply it to it. But yeah, it's. It's a, it's a concerning problem, a continuing problem. And I, I have no doubt that it would take more money than we currently spend to go ahead and address it.
And Stuart Bulley.
I'd like to just say that I appreciate Amber's comments at the very beginning when she talked about how homelessness and affordable housing are both significant, but they're essentially separate. That's what I picked up from that and I agree. I might also like to appreciate Milton's comments about what resources might be available and just mention one that has been talked to me recently about, which is. There seems to be a significant amount of benefits available for homeless veterans. It's possible we're not accessing those to the extent that we should. So it's possible there may be some avenues for us to bring some federal dollars that are talked about. As we identify the people who might qualify for them. With regard to homelessness, I think it's very important that the city and the county have passed joint resolution. Talking about how we're going to work together in the coming days and years. And I think there'll be an effort to identify gaps in service and duplications in service. And also to kind of state our expectations for how our nonprofit partners, you know, will join us in this. And, and, you know, I, I don't think it's dictating so much as saying this, these are how we'll be measuring and this is how we'll be doing. With regard to affordable housing, one part we haven't talked very much about is raising income levels. That, you know, we need to get more projects like Pretzels and US Engineering and, and, you know, raise the income levels as well as the decrease the housing cost.
Let's pick up the pace with question number six. You'll have a thirty-second response time. The question is, according to the city agenda packet, to change the governance structure of the city. The city commission needs to adopt a resolution putting the proposition on the ballot, thereby submitting it to the voters for decision. Would you support a resolution based on the task force's recommendation for an elected at-large mayor with commissioners from six districts? First up will be Milton Scott.
You know, I do, first of all, uh, support a measure that allow the the citizens to vote on it and what they think uh would be uh good for the community. My concern is that I I would like to see a hybrid version of what the the recommendation. I think it's important probably to have the city ma- um mayor to be elected as then we can, and separate four-year term, you give that individual a chance to see that vision come through. Because some, you know, as we change commissioners and change the vice mayor and the mayor, those things change. It would be nice.
Thank you, Milton. I'm gonna cut you off. Lisa Larson, it's your turn.
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, so the task force gave us the recommendation, the city commission. And we are now in the process of doing a process of doing a year-long um community engagement about this very subject. So I would be hesitant about committing one way or the other until I've had an opportunity just to hear what the community has to say about about the entire issue.
Ma Kua Jones.
I'm gonna agree with Milton. I think that we should have a hybrid version of that. I do support an elected mayor. Um, I don't have a position on the districts for uh county commissioner or city commissioners. I think that there's a lot of um issues that I have with it. Mapping, uh, re-districting at a certain point, um, certain districts having higher income levels. And so I think that uh, I think a hybrid version, but keeping at-large city commissioners would probably be my my position. But I would I would want the community engagement.
Bart Littlejohn.
Uh, yes, I'm I'm so glad that it's been a thing for for community engagement. I think that's very important. Uh, it's a huge decision to make, so everyone should take a part in it. And I agree with the hybrid model. Uh, I have a little bit hesitant hesitant seeing with districts just because uh it kind of went itself to bureaucracy sometimes. So I would like to dive a little bit deeper into it, you know, find out a little bit more information from what the community thinks.
Stuart Bowley.
I think the community engagement portion is very significant, and the community needs to have an opportunity to learn about and discuss, you know, what the options are, what are the uh, you know, pluses and minuses of all these things. If we can come together um and, you know, get a resolution on the ballot that people then have a chance to vote up or down, um, I think that would be better than just putting the one that we got from the uh commission. I appreciate the work of the commission, but they work very quickly. So, thank you.
Amber Sellers.
Yes, as a member of the community engaging in this conversation, I would directly, I would be in support of a directly elected mayor as well as a hybrid model for our commission, for to have four um, to have four outlined districts and two at-large. Um, as someone who lives in a community uh in in a part of town that may not strategically make it in a district, at-large gives you the opportunity and strategy to engage um in a way that could be it gives you a strategic advantage, so.
Okay, question seven will be another 30 seconds response time. Do you support assessing a fee for or banning single-use plastic bags? And first up will be Lisa Larson.
Sorry about that. Um. So um, I'm definitely in support of continuing to look at this issue and and in overall, I think it's, I think it would be a good idea to ban plastic bags, but we got to make sure we have something in place that um would allow us to obviously exchange those out. Because it is, it's a huge issue. Uh, the plastic bag issue is is the the trash that is generated from that. So I, you know, I'm supportive in in general.
Ma Kua Jones.
This is something we've talked about with the Sustainability Advisory Board at length. One of the fears is that if we ban uh single-use plastic bags, that the state would implement a statewide legislation that would supersede ours as city uh city commission uh ordinance. And so I think that encouraging, uh, you know, discouraging use of single-use plastic bags. I don't agree with assessing a fee unless we're putting that fee into uh underrepresented communities, marginalized communities. I think that uh, you know, encouraging that and and um have a have a city, have a city goal for eliminating it.
Bart Littlejohn.
Uh, yes, yeah, I would be, I would be uh generally in favor of it, but I would have to see uh the surrounding parts of it. You know, I I agree with Ma Kua, the fee part, I'm a little bit hesitant on. It's like, because, you know, that could be applied to towards underrepresented communities and, you know, ostensibly hurt them more. But uh, I I I think we can figure out a way to do it. I'd love to be engaged in that conversation.
Stuart Bowley.
Um, I appreciate the answers that have come before me. And, you know, this is something I'm going to continue to consider. The uh Kennedy Grade School kids came to the city hall when I was mayor, and it was wonderful to see them. That's kind of, we've been talking about this for a while, but I think Lisa's point about we need to come up with a solution for the community is significant, and Ma Kua's concern about the Kansas legislature is certainly justified.
Amber Sellers.
You know, I I'd hate for us to live in fear for any decision we make here locally due to home rule. But um, having spent a week in LA, I could see the benefits of of a fee, small fee on uh on plastic bags, where to Ma Kua's point, if those funds were utilized for whether it's for the arts or to support early care and education, or even what we talked about earlier, um, affordable housing and/or homelessness. Um, so I think you can look at it from both ways. But in general, if we're going to do us a fee, as long as it goes to something that represents um that human infrastructure aspect of our community, I'm in favor of it.
And Milton Scott.
Oh, I'm I'm not in favor of having a fee. I think that this was, this is an opportunity for us to do public-private with the gorgeous change to look at incentives and ways that we can do this without incurring a fee on individuals and and rewarding individuals who participate in recyclable uh X.
Okay, question number eight will also be a 30 seconds response time. All of you candidates have devoted a lot of time attending various forums with your other candidates. You probably know one another's positions better than anyone else does. In 30 seconds, please describe how you are different. Do you have different policy objectives, or would you approach the position differently? Ma Kua Jones.
One of the things that I've um really voiced is um I would approach the position of city commission differently. You know, we talk about homelessness, and and I've experienced homelessness in in Lawrence. And so I think that that brings a different perspective. I'm a renter, therefore I've uh experienced predatory landlords. Uh, you know, renting place to place, um, having exorbitant high rent rates. And so I think that uh, that's that's what sets me apart different is my lived experience in Lawrence. I've lived a different experience than than a lot of other commissioners have.
Bart Littlejohn.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I I come from neighborhoods, um, community engagement that way. Try to build that consensus, that collaboration between different aspects of our our neighborhoods. My particular neighborhood is low mod, low to moderate income, so some part of the neighborhood has a little bit more money than other parts, and some parts have access when others don't. And building those cohesive units and building that collaboration that go towards goals. I hope to apply that to the city as a whole, and I think I can bring that perspective.
Stuart Bowley.
I have uh 32 years' experience as an IRS auditor, six years in the nonprofit world in in Douglas County at the Douglas County Community Foundation. Six years of experience on the Lawrence City Commission, including years as mayor. I had five years on the Traffic Safety Commission before that, so um, I guess I'd sum it up by saying I'm old.
Amber Sellers.
Stuart might be old, but he loves him some Silas and Maddie's. I would say, as a black woman and not someone who is of a minority population, my lived experience has afforded me opportunity to be in the room and not be seen and not be heard. And so while being in that place, I've gleaned so much from those experiences of not being seen that I've used those in my career to elevate me to a place where I now am a better systems thinker, a connector, a bridger, and someone who has taken that and combined it with my experience of understanding the legislature and knowing that what happens in Topeka.
Thank you, Amber. I'm gonna s- switch us over to Milton Scott.
No, both my diverse uh life and professional experience set me apart from the other candidates. Uh, I grew up in public housing and a community of high poverty. And I uh spent majority of my life professional experience career in affordable housing, and I know those issues locally and and nationally, so I think that was set me apart from them.
And we have Lisa Larson.
Thank you very much. So I think what sets me apart is my experience to begin with. Uh, my six years of experience as a commissioner and former mayor for one year. My experience as a former small business owner for 22 years, that provides me with a business background and also as a mediator, which I do more now. I think the biggest thing that sets me apart from everybody else is my scientific background. I've got 30 years' experience in environmental geology as an environmental geologist. In those 30 years, my job was to do environmental investigations and environmental remediation cleanup.
Thank you, candidates, for your responses to all eight of my questions. To end the evening, it's not really a question. We're just going to give you one minute for you to make your closing argument to the voters as to why they should pick you. We'll start with Bart Littlejohn.
Well, I want to thank Douglas County Democrats for having us today. It's been awesome. We go ahead and explore these questions and be a part of this conversation. And mostly, I just want to let everybody know that um I'm asking you to join me on this journey because I can't do this alone. Uh, for the changes that we're talking about to be effective and sustainable, we have to make efforts to reach out to those who are ignored, those who have who haven't been part of the process, and those who don't feel like they're a part of the community or institutions that we have here. We have to be willing to work on the things that bring us together. We have to be willing to work on the things that we might not necessarily agree with, but we we know that need to be done. It'll take rolling up our sleeves and getting into work. It'll take going out into our community. It'll take letting people know that they're not alone, that they will be heard, and that they matter. You folks are why I'm running. I think we're at our best when we work together and we bring others along with us. Extremely proud to be from this town and chosen. I will represent it to the best of my ability. Thank you all for coming, and hopefully you will vote for me November 2nd. Thank you.
Next up, we'll hear from Stuart Bowley.
Thank you. I again like to thank the Douglas County Democrats for bringing us together today. I've been working for the community as a city commissioner for six years. During that time, we've initiated strategic planning, capital improvement planning, asset management planning. We've recently, in the last couple of years, it was just over two years ago, we hired Craig Owens as the city manager. We're making progress in a lot of different areas, but there's still a lot of work to do. And I'd I'd still like to work for the community as a commissioner for another term. And, you know, being on the city mission is like being a part of a team. I pledge to work with whomever you choose as commissioners during the next term. And uh, I ask for your vote in the general election. Thank you.
Amber Sellers.
And to echo the sentiment of those before me, thank you again to the Douglas County Dems and to our moderator this evening. I've always said something from the beginning that um social justice and public health and public safety, well, public health and public safety is deeply rooted in social justice. And we are at a time in our life that we are in need of transformational change and transformational leadership that will bring that change. I understand that when we have nurses and other essential workers in our community who can't afford to live here, we all suffer. And I know that I have the leadership experience to make better decisions and that when all the voices are at the table, that we are truly, we truly become an unmistakable community. So I ask you to lean on my experience, my my lived, my lived experience, my expertise in public health and public policy, and allow me the opportunity to serve you as your next city commissioner. Thank you.
Milton Scott.
You know, my uh 20-plus years in affordable housing, I think is an asset to the community that I would be able to uh bring along this community in such a much faster way. While I'm also concerned about flooding and infrastructure, I think that we need to make sure that we are directing those dollars to address those issues. So I'm looking at resolving the issues in the community that's been going on for some time. And I also want to be able to look at and halt the utility rates, the high utility rates. I think that we need to begin to look at our budget and live within our means. So those are things that I think that practical things that um residents are concerned about that we need to look at, and I think that I can afford those issues and bring them to fruition. And and I ask for your vote on November 2nd.
Lisa Larson.
Sorry about that again. Um, so I would just ask that you look at my record. And if you believe that the work that we've been doing over the past six years at the commission, trying to move our community forward, then I would definitely ask for your vote um as a form, as a as a leader of our community, um, a former small business owner. You know, I think that I bring in the experience that is needed to continue on the path and to actually to you know, make additional changes, continue to make those changes that we've been trying to do for several years and have been doing for for several years. So I ask for your vote.
And last, we'll hear from Ma Kua Jones.
One of the goals of me running was to to be a voice for the historically excluded populations here in Lawrence. And and I'm and I'm really excited that more people, more candidates are talking about environmental sustainability. I think that, you know, the climate crisis is is very real to people, and I think that that's something that we need to be more climate resilient on. All of the the measures that the city commission voted on, those were put forth by the Sustainability Advisory Board. I chair the Sustainability Advisory Board, and so we're doing the work to make Lawrence more environmentally sustainable. You know, the the, I I represent a different aspect of Lawrence. I've I've had to rely on community resources, and that's, I want to put more funding into our community resources because they really do help people um in times of need. I think that Burt Nash needs, you know, we need to work with them more. I think that was mentioned a lot um to to provide the the mental health for chronically homeless people. Um, and and I understand these issues firsthand.
Well, that concludes um the questions and answers for the evening. I want to thank all six candidates for your time, and I will pass it back over to Pat.
I want to thank Natalie as well for her her questions. And the candidate, I know Stuart's nodding, kind of like they weren't all so easy. We have a lot of Democrats here, and that's great, but we're still tough on ourselves, so thanks for bearing with us. Thank you all very much. Um, we appreciate your leadership, your service, and your commitment. I am going to end with a thank you to to each of you and to Natalie, but I'm also going to give a homework assignment to the people that have been watching tonight. Those are the people that, you know, I'm pretty sure that everybody who's watching tonight is going to vote. Voting starts next week. You can start doing early voting next week. Lots of ways to vote. By mail, you can go see the new election center at 23rd and Louisiana, which is a really nice facility. And, you know, you can hang in there and wait till November 2nd to vote. But I know pretty much most of the people that are watching tonight are going to vote. So here's where we get to the heavy lift. So here's where we get to the heavy lifting that we need to do as citizens, um, to support our candidates, whoever, whoever they might be. Think about, try to identify a couple of people that, that you think might not vote. They might be family members, they might be colleagues or coworkers, um, they, they might be neighbors. And maybe share this video with them, which will be available on our website tomorrow. Uh, and maybe, um, talk to them about why it matters. But we need to get our voter turnout on this. These, we've talked about how important the issues are. So it's now our turn as voters to make sure that we get some more voters out between now and November 2nd. So candidates, you're doing great work. Keep knocking on doors. Keep working. I think you're about out of forums. That's, I'm sure that's going to be a treat. But for the rest of us, we've still got some time to find some other voters, and that's our job, so, um. Did you hear me, audience? I hope so. Anyway, have a nice night, have a great weekend. And, um, thank you again, one and all. Good night.